So we're ready to begin. Before we begin, we have a very honored guest with us tonight. Doug Olson, the new commissioner, Tillamook County Commissioner is here. If you don't know Doug, I can't believe you've been in Tillamook County anytime. Doug has done about everything there is to do. He was on the board of Tillamook County PUD and actually president of the statewide board, as I understand. He's been on almost all of the committees for Tillamook County. And so his selection was excellent. He served actually on the Budget Committee with Leo Salmon. So you were in good company at that point. We would love to have you come and say a few words for us. He also brought his wife Patty to join us, and we're really glad to have you here too, Patty.
Where would you like me to go?
Up here would be great.
Okay. I'd like to face these people too if I can, but I'll start with you. Thank you so much, Chair. My name is Doug Olson and I've been in Tillamook County thirty years, a little over thirty years. My wife Patty and I came down here in 1993, and we're both native Oregonians, by the way, so we're not from California or anywhere like that. No offense to those of you who are from California. And so when you come to a small area, and I had worked for Washington County before, and my wife had worked twenty-five years for the U.S. Postal Service down in Portland, when you come to a relatively small town, and we ended up in Pacific City, they say, well, what's your background? What did you do? And how, where can you help us? And that's the same in Manzanita, it's the same, all towns all over. And so I ended up on our Water and Sewer Board for several terms and became a joint water and sanitary authority. And then I was asked to run for Tillamook PUD. And so I'm in my fourth term, but actually I stepped down as of the end of the year when I was appointed to the county commission. And today's my second day on the job. I was sworn in by Judge Hill yesterday, so.
Wow, congratulations.
I have, as the Chair pointed out, I've been on the Budget Committee for Tillamook County for probably close to twenty years. And I did work with one of your esteemed citizens here for some years as well. And I've been up here lots of times. We've had PUD meetings in this room and other things going on, campaigns and so on. Commissioner Yamamoto, who had this position for seven years, was also from Pacific City. He decided to take an early retirement. His wife, they purchased some property in Henderson, Nevada, which is a suburb of Las Vegas, most of you know probably. And he decided that they were aging like we all are, that they would pull the pin and move on, and they did. So the county said, well, we'll open it up and appoint somebody to fill that term and then maybe run for another term. There were a dozen or more of us who applied, and I actually had thought, well, I don't really need a job. We sold our business, we're comfortable, we're not wealthy, but we're okay. Our checks clear the bank when we go to Fred Meyer, that sort of thing. But a number of people, including Representative Javady, our state representative, literally called me a few hours before and said, you better turn in for it. We really want you to be considered. So I did. And lo and behold, I got appointed. What I have told the people and the commission is I am not going to run for election in this coming cycle. I've been elected now seven times, and time for the younger people to step up. But I do know enough about the county. As was pointed out, I've been on a number of boards and commissions. I've been on the Budget Committee now, as I said, for quite some time. And so it's a fairly easy transition because I know how the things work, and I know a lot of legislators and so on. So I'm your commissioner now for the next year, for better or worse. And what I want to do is I'm going to go to all seven of our cities over the next six weeks or so, and I'm going to probably go to some of the school districts and maybe our special districts and simply say who I am. So when you call, you put a face with a number, and I'll be more than happy to take your complaints and get you to the right people because, you know, we're all, the way I look at government in Oregon and maybe America is, you know, we're all human beings and we're all going basically down the same road, trying to do the best we can. And in a small community like Tillamook County, a lot of people know, people know almost everybody. You folks all know each other, I'm sure, and I know some of you, even though I live sixty-five or seventy miles away. And so the way I look at things is if there's an issue, it's all of our issues. And I'll do what I can to make it work. I'm familiar with a lot of the county staff, and we've got some really, really good staff. They're up here, I'm familiar with the PUD and what they do, and a lot of other agencies as well. I also served on the hospital board for a few years, and so I know nothing about medicine, as I told them when they asked me, but I do know how to read a financial statement. That was my undergraduate education in finance. So anyway, having said all that, I simply wanted to leave a business card and a number and invite any of you to call. And if you're in Tillamook and you've got a question at the county, and if you're not getting the answer, call me and I'll get you the answer. You may not like the answer, but I'll get you an answer. Thank you so much, Chair. It's my pleasure to be here and be with all of you. And we'll probably take our leave since I've got an hour rainy drive home. But again, thanks so much. It's my pleasure to be with your group, and good luck with your election of your mayor.
Thank you.
Start your meeting again. Thanks for all of you. Probably see me again, and please do call.
Okay, safe drive. Well, welcome, everybody. We are now opening the city council. We really appreciate everybody's attendance. It's January third, and this is the first city council meeting in 2024. The time is 6:10, and as council president, I will preside over the meeting until a new mayor is appointed. At the last meeting, we had about twenty people in attendance, twenty-one via Zoom and thirty-two via the website, for a total of seventy-three people. That's really good. That's really good, and we're delighted that there's that much participation. It's just excellent. We hope to have the numbers for tonight at the end of the meeting so that we know what the attendance was this evening. I hope everyone had an excellent Christmas and a wonderful start to the new year. We had our second annual Christmas tree lighting this last month, and it was a great success. And I know this will be something we'll have every year. It was a lot of fun. We are looking forward to starting this year with a positive and productive start to the new year, and I'm hoping that this year will be even better than last year. So first on the agenda is the public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and topics should not be included on the agenda items. Speakers shall identify themselves by their names and by the place of residence. Should there be more speakers than can be heard for three minutes each during the thirty-minute period provided for public comment, the presiding officer may ask for an extended period of time. So Nancy, do we have any people?
Yes.
All right. First, we have Mark Kessner. Excellent. State your name and address. Welcome, Mark.
Hello there. Mark Kessner, five eight eight Epo Avenue here in Manzanita. Today, I wanted to pretty much mention some things about the Tillamook County Housing Commission. For many of you, you should know there is a Tillamook County Housing Commission, and I am the North County Rep. on that commission. The mission statement is to collaboratively advocate for attainable and equitable solutions that impact Tillamook County's greatest housing needs. It meets the first Thursday of every month, so that would be tomorrow morning. It's public, so we encourage everyone to attend either virtually or in person. The committee is currently hearing presentations on, from developers and others, for building and finance plans of the multifamily rental housing fund grant. This is aimed at getting affordable rental housing built in Tillamook County. There were four presentations that are due December meeting, and they'll be forward tomorrow morning. The four presentations last month, one relevant to Manzanita in particular, was a developer in the urban growth boundary, I believe, of Manzanita beyond the Highlands, and that would be if they end up building sixty-eight units in some form of affordable, whether it's sixty to eighty percent or a hundred of EMI, well, we'll see. The amount that we have to allocate this year is $400,000, so it's competitive because that isn't very much money for developers. Oh, and that was it, but one of the fun things at the first meeting was my co-commissioners came up and said, you have the most amazing city manager. They said, Lila Amon, her expertise on housing is amazing. And I said, little Manzanita, you know about this. And so I wanted to give a shout out that we can be hometown proud. And so, oh, and also I have the agenda for tomorrow's meeting and how to log on if anyone wants it. By all means, let me know.
So Mark, on the $400,000, is that going to go to just one development? Or are you going to try to, or are you going to?
It can go however the county commissioners decide, you know.
Will you recommend to them?
I think, given the first four, I mean, one of them would take everything. So you have to make a lot of decisions about bang for the buck.
Right.
And there's a whole rating thing of affordability. How do we sort of get to the goals of affordable or usable housing in Tillamook County with limited resources? So it will depend, we'll see again tomorrow with the next four presentations, how it goes.
Will you let us know?
George. I'll come back next month.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's really good. I'm really delighted you're involved in that. That has an impact on city of Manzanita. Thanks, Mark. Okay. First, I hope for Sandy Wood. Go ahead, state your name and address.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We're ready, Sandy.
Okay. Thank you for allowing the public to comment, and I'm pleased to hear the good things. But I would like to express my distress with the behavior of you, all of you treating Deb so despicably. She was elected by more people than any mayor or councillors. I worked days door knocking to see if people had ballots and so forth, and I never heard anything but praise for Deb and her efforts to try to make things better. And I suspect that the way you have treated her is one reason why people did not want to apply to be mayor, because nobody wants to be treated that way. I have a question about the $24,000 attorney fees. How much of that is for the investigation? And when and how are we going to learn about the results, the questions, the accusations, or any of the rest of it? And third, how can a city council consisting of two people elected and the majority of three of you, having been appointed by three people, be valid? Our city council should be voted for and elected by the community, not by three people. And I want to, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
And where is the integrity of the city council? Where is honoring and appreciating what Mayor Simmons was trying to do? And apologies for your accusation, contempt, and lies toward her? Now I'm done.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Thanks for your comments. All right. Next, we have Kayleen Weineger. Weineger, go ahead, state your name and address.
Hi, this is Kayleen Weineger, thirty-seven Portland Avenue, and I have a story to tell. In August of 2022, a certain councilman, then friend of mine, came to me and said, Kayleen, if you could find me two strong women to elect to council, I could make some changes in this town. So I set out to do that. I emailed a luncheon invite to nine women, some I knew and some I didn't. I said, if you are a strong, powerful, intelligent woman who wants to change some things about Manzanita, come to a powerful lunch at my picnic table. Nine came. After introductions, my friend Adele talked about strengths and weaknesses and told each of us to express why we would or would not run for council. I remember that I said I had a fear of budget terms. And another friend commented that she had a fear of public speaking. After everyone took a turn, then Adele assured us, she said, well, we can be a group, we can help. If you become a councilwoman, then we can help you with understanding the councillor's packet and any budget terms, and we can help you with public speaking if you need that type of help. Then Deb Simmons spoke up and said, I would consider running if I had a group like this to help me read the councillor's packet, to help me understand the comprehensive plan. So we met monthly from August twenty-two until November twenty-three, more than a year. You see, Deb Simmons was not a puppet of Randy Coogler, nor of William Simmons. She had eight women preparing for her a year before running. We all studied the comprehensive plan together. I still have my tattered, highlighted copy of it. We studied the city charter. We studied zones and ordinances. We collected articles about cities all over the U.S., particularly pertaining to the SDR industry. We campaigned for Deb, and she won. We campaigned for Brad, and he won. Deb was run out of town by all of you. She was our first mayor that the people loved because she cared about us, the citizens. There's a lot of hurt in Manzanita right now, and there is no respect for those who mocked Deb, those who shook a finger in her face and rolled their eyes and snickered. You ran off a good person. We are beyond sad. That's all.
Thank you, Kayleen. Is there anyone else? No, that is all. That's all. Okay. Okay. We're going to move into the consent agenda. The consent items are not discussed during the meeting. They are approved in one motion, and any council member may remove an item for separate discussion. The consent items include for consideration: approval of minutes for November eighth, 2023 regular session, November eighth, 2023 special session, November fifteenth, 2023 work session, and approval of the bills. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great. So now we're on to the agenda. So the first item is the fiscal year twenty twenty-two twenty-three audit. Nina Crest and Cory Scarrett, welcome Cory.
City manager.
Hello. Second best spectacular. Highlight. I'm out of here, right? Sorry. Okay, please.
City manager. I'll give you one sec, Nina. I just have a quick update. Thank you for the floor, Council President. So just a few updates for folks. I do want to piggyback off of what Linda discussed with respect to the tree lighting. It was, I thought, a screaming success. I think many of you were there. I do want to give a special shout out in particular to Dan Weitzel, who I know is on the call and really led the charge on that, as well as Santa and Mrs. Claus, who were, I think, that line was there for well over two hours.
Oh, yeah.
We had a lot of youngsters, and it was just brilliant.
And then the adults came.
And then the adults came. So we had Santa part two. So that was great. And I do want to give a shout out specifically to Dan, to Jeremy, Jason, Josh, and Cale, and Lori, who really make up our public works staff, did all the beautiful lighting that you saw. I think Jason made those cute little trees that were there, so if you want one for next year, feel free to reach out to Jason. And I also want to give a shout out to Kendra Hall, who is the executive director of the Farmer's Market. We had a little less show for the folks that showed up, but those that did were mighty, and we appreciated their partnership and expect to have them participate next year. So that was fantastic and good time for everyone. I did want to note, if you haven't noticed already, the demolition has started on the buildings on Hill Plaza, which is indicative of the abatement being completed. And so I do want to note that we were able to do that within budget, and so that was great. The abatement was one of the risk factors that we were concerned about. So all the asbestos has been abated, and we have clearance, and that's on its way to DEQ. So we're in really good shape there. And we expect the demolition to be completed in the next week or so, and the site cleared, and then perhaps for the beginning of construction, which we're still targeting for the early part of March. Couple of other just quick housekeeping items. I got an email today, I've received a few emails over the weeks about people with parking complaints. I'm always happy to take those, but I'm not the professional to respond to those calls. So I just want to remind as a public service announcement to folks that our PD are great, they're out on the street, they're always busy and working, but they can't be everywhere all the time all at once. And so it's really important, if you see something, to please let us know. There are two numbers I'm going to give you, and I'll slow down if you want to write them down, which is 503-368-7229. That goes directly to Manzanita PD. There is an answering machine there. Our team checks that constantly, and so if you have a non-urgent emergency or want to note something, please call that number, and someone will respond. You can also, if you need an officer right away, but it's not a 911 type of emergency, you can call dispatch, and that number's 503-815-1911. So if you see someone parking on Third Street, where we put the signs up just recently, some thanks PD and Public Works for that, please call, because, like I said, we can't be everywhere all the time all at once, but we do want to be responsive to folks' concerns. City offices will be closed January fifteenth in honor of the great Martin Luther King. I will be doing a State of the City at the Pine Grove here, meeting on the sixteenth at 6:00 p.m. So please come and support that organization, and if you want to hear me, it's great to have you there. Court will be canceled this week, just didn't have enough tickets. So it's going to be postponed, not postponed, but canceled until February. And we do have planning commission this coming Monday, and we'll be finalizing hopefully the transportation system plan, ordinance amendments, and getting that off to legal and hopefully up to the city council in the next couple of months. So that's all I've got. Thanks for so.
So could you talk a little bit more about the Third Street? And this is a response to a citizen's complaint about a dog being hit, if I remember correctly?
Well, it's, yes. I mean, that was an incident that occurred. City staff went and examined that area, and this is the area where there's a stripe, sort of a dotted line stripe along Third, which isn't technically a bike lane. So we made the decision to put no parking signs on that side of the street.
Okay.
Because we actually didn't have the ability to enforce no parking because it's not technically a bike lane. And so that was a solution that we came up with.
Okay.
As we start talking about the implementation of the TSP, and we start getting a little bit further down the track, that roadway is actually part of the bike network that's proposed.
Oh, good.
And so I anticipate that we will see some further improvements on.
Now, that's a county road, so how does that impact?
So we've been doing a lot of research. Yeah, you're drilling me. I've been doing a lot of research. We actually, we're the road authority, we being you as the city council is the road authority, and we are able to both manage speed limits and do improvements to that road. We're not responsible for the maintenance, but we're actually working on materials to bring to council as a package to discuss the pro cons of taking over those streets.
Okay.
We're not really, we're not complete with that work yet, so we'll be coming, probably the first part of this year.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. Any other questions for later? All right, now can we go to the audit?
Now you can go to the audit. The highlight of the night.
The highlight of the week. Cory, it's really good to have you back. Thank you so much for coming. And Nina, as always, thank you so much. I'm going to pass the baton to you guys.
I guess, should I pass it to Cory? Why don't you give us the lead, Nina? Okay, so we received the results of last fiscal year's financial audit. That is posted on the city website for anyone who's interested in reading it. We had a really smooth audit this year, especially compared to the difficulties we suffered last year. We had no major findings, just two significant deficiencies, which we get every year that are related to the size of our city and limited staffing in the finance department. And so I'll hand it to Cory, and then after that, I'll go over the plan of action.
Okay, great.
Perfect. Thank you, Nina. So I'll second what Nina said. I'm Cory from Acuity, by the way, the city's auditors. This audit went much more smoothly than the 2022 audit. And some of the findings, some of the recommendations we have are really just repeats because we had final tweaks on some of the updates that we had Nina fix for 2022, without getting into the weeds about your accounting program, just a few additional steps that we all, it was like, oh, this needs to happen, okay. And so I know she fixed those right away, which is exciting. So even, I anticipate 2024 will be even stronger of an audit. So we did have the segregation of duties. It's written down, it's a significant deficiency because of the size of the city. It's our annual reminder to you as a city council that you're an important part of the process, asking questions, reviewing financials, being present and transparent, expecting that out of your staff is an important piece of the controls of the city. The other one, I think, actually will be downgraded as Nina gets stronger in her position. It's that we, that you're not drafting your own financial statements. Since your cash basis, that's one that we look at year to year. This year, we just happened to have a really big audit adjustment. And when we have a really big audit adjustment, and it ties back to that cash cleanup, we can't really demonstrate that you would have been able to do it yourselves, so then we have that finding. But in a year, other than that one big audit adjustment, we just had two really minor ones. And so had those been our only ones, we probably would have actually said, this one can be downgraded this year. So that one, we'll be looking at that really closely in the next audit, just see if maybe that one could go away, which would be lovely. You had one minor over expenditure, and when I say minor, it was $837 in the storm drain facilities. It broke all of our hearts, I'm not going to lie, because I thought we were in the clear, and then that little tiny fund that popped up. So overall, though, that's really good news. That means in your general fund with all the different departments and all the breakouts, everything was solid. In water, which is your other main operating fund, in streets, everything was within budget. So really good progress made on budget. That one was an oops, it happened.
Yeah.
I feel like from a budgetary compliance standpoint, you guys are really on solid footing, though. So nothing in that regard to lose a lot of sleepover, but Oregon is very black and white. You were in compliance or you weren't, there's no gray, and so we have to mark it as not. And the other finding we had related to what Oregon asks us to look at is public contracting. And this was a great learning opportunity. You guys had to do an emergency procurement, and Oregon is very specific about the process for that, and it just didn't get followed. The intent was there to follow the rule, but now Nina knows exactly what the rule is, and we'll hold you guys all accountable, we'll hold Dan accountable to making sure those are met. As a side note, the state finally does realize that some of the thresholds are outdated yet again because of inflation. And so in January first, the levels for, all of the appropriation levels that you're required to get bids for and things actually went up again. And so we'll be doing a little mailer out to our audit clients soon to let you guys know, remind you that those are, those levels have changed. So it's easy, so they're trying to make it even easier to be in compliance, which is really good news. So again, I feel like that was a really good learning opportunity. It's probably not something that's going to come up every year, but it was, it was good for your staff to learn that. And then our last thing was just the final piece of the cash cleanup, which, again, I don't think will be a repeat issue. And even though we did still have a little bit of that, overall, your cash process has gotten much better. The reports are so good coming out of your accounting program. The recording was so good this year. We dug and dug, and I was so pleased with what I saw. Nina is diligently working to make sure your controls and your processes are not only documented, but that they're strong. And so it's something that we're more than happy to always answer questions about, and she's very willing to take feedback and to make tweaks where she needs to. So it's been a really good, I know it's been a long transition, but it really, it really has strengthened your financial processes, and I'm really pleased with that. And I think budgeting will even get easier, too. It's one of the really strong pieces of. Nina is diligently working to make sure your controls and your processes are not only documented, but that they're strong. And so it's something that we're more than happy to always answer questions about, and she's very willing to take feedback and to make tweaks where she needs to. So it's been a really good, I know it's been a long transition, but it really, it really has strengthened your financial processes, and I'm really pleased with that. And I think budgeting will even get easier, too. It's, it's one of the, the really strong pieces of council. So hopefully that starts paying dividends as well, since we've got solid information. From a financial standpoint, the city ended the year with just over $19 million in net position. The income with governmental and the water funds combined was just over $1 million of net income. A lot of that is timing. It's timing of resources coming in, project money is going out. But it is still nice to see your ending cash go up and that the balances are healthy. So you got a lot of stuff coming up. So it's good to know that you're on good financial footing right now. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So one, the, what we keep kind of pounded on is internal controls with the staff that we have. So is that just an additional staff member? Is that, what, what, what transitions us to the next level?
For the segregation of duties?
Right.
I don't anticipate that you would actually ever get rid of it unless you add three or four accounting staff. And we really would never ask you to do that. So that one stays, unless you're able to add one or two people, which really, if you're able to add staff, I think you need them in other areas. Not that, I wouldn't say Nina would probably love to have help, but, but that's a tough ask. When you always need more police officers, when you probably always need more public works. I mean, that's a big ask, so.
So it's likely that we'll have that on an ongoing basis.
Yes.
The last question, which I just was interested in, you create a financial statement that we can't create? And so what's the difference between the financial statement that you create and the interim document that Nina would create?
That's a great question, Linda. So ours includes all of those notes that are in there and all of the schedules that go with the notes. You, your accounting software and Nina herself is capable, I do think, of doing that. It's just now we need to get to the point that we don't have audit adjustments that are significant, that are a big enough number. So now we're looking at the size of those audit adjustments to say, okay, did we quite meet it this year? We didn't quite meet it this year. But I do feel like moving forward, that's something that could easily go away. Because in a cash basis audit, if we're not making audit adjustments, then that tells me that the information could drop right into financial statements. And Nina's very good with capital assets, which are, is really your one thing that changes from your strictly cash basis in and out up to that modified cash, is really just the capital assets and the debt. Debt's no problem. She can tell me exactly what you owe on anything that you owe. And so then it's just the capital assets, which she's been a huge help with whenever we need. So I, Nina's background is strong enough that I think as, as long as we don't have those big audit adjustments, she, we can take that one down to just, we just note it, that we're just drafting it for you, and it doesn't go to a level of a significant deficiency anymore.
Great.
And I'm excited about that. That's good.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely. So are there any more questions for Corey? Hey, Nina?
Well, I, it's not a question so much as an observation. I mean, so we got to this audit result this year. I can remember Nina talking about the year prior, and I remember, if, if not the numbers, I remember the amount of difficulty that staff went through to get transitioned to the new system. So it sounds to me, Corey, part of what you're seeing is, this is another area where one of those long-term investments that's behind the scenes, and most people don't really know what's going on.
Right.
Updated us, upgraded us, allowed us to get more done, the same amount of hours in staff, and has helped to get it to a better result for the audit. Now, that all sounds very positive, I realize. So if it's, if it's not as positive as that, please let me know. But that's what it looks like from my seat. So what would your observation be?
I would agree with that 100%. It was a long-term investment. The transition is hard, always with new accounting software, but it is worth the time and investment. And, and it does allow Nina to be much more efficient than the old system. And there's a lot less duplication of effort now, so.
Right. And Nina didn't give up. And she didn't give up.
I'm still here.
That's good.
I'm smiling. If I could just say, if I may, auditing and budget are really hard. Nina does the audit. She is 100% really responsible for the audit. And I, you know, I can't express how much work, perseverance, intellectual curiosity, and an ability to execute that Nina has. And because of that, we had the audit that we had this time. And the note that Corey made about the, the audit adjustment, that won't happen again, because Nina has been working very hard with all of our departments to both segregate some of those responsibilities. So even though we can't fully segregate duties, we, we, being Nina, I'm not going to take any credit for it, has distributed those responsibilities out to other staff in order to help create that distance as much as possible within the limits that we have. So she has led that. She has trained other staff. And the place that resulted in that, that shift, and Nina can scowl at me if I'm off base here, but that's not going to happen again because of the systems that she's put in place. So I just, I think it's really important for the nerds out there that care about auditing, which I do a great deal. This was an extraordinary effort, and Nina did it. She had some support from our financial advisor, but I just have to give her the full and total credit for just kicking on this. So thank you, Nina, for all that.
Yeah.
And the, the major draw, which is what you're talking about, was pretty much leftover from the conversion. It came over as a, as an invalid thing from the conversion. Wasn't actually dealing with, with the-
Yep. It was that leftover piece that's now done and gone. Yeah.
And thank you, Corey. We have to sing your praises. You went through a lot getting the last year's office, for sure.
Sounds like a good team. It sounds like a really good team.
Having, having a finance accounting manager who's willing to dig in and make sure it's right is a, a real gift. So you guys, you guys, Nina, you do a great job, so.
Thank you, Corey. Nina, did you have anything you want to say?
The last piece is just the plan of action. So that was included in the packet. That's a requirement the state of Oregon basically is a tool for council to, for us to communicate those deficiencies and our plan of action to improve them, which we just sort of discussed that is challenging, given the size of our city. But we continually try to do that. And then with the financial statements, as Corey said, we're going to, you know, we partner with Acuity to do most of that. And then I will continue to elevate us doing it on our end. So I'm just asking for council to accept the deficiencies and accept the plan of action.
Excellent. And as a side note, sorry, I'll step in. The plan of action came about the state legislature tasked the Secretary of State Audits Division with reporting to them every year how many findings there are within the state and what those findings are specifically. And last year at our municipal conference, they said only 16% of the municipalities in Oregon were actually in compliance with that requirement. So they asked us as audit firms to help our clients be in compliance. And so that's why you're getting that from us this year instead of being on your own with it.
Thank you, Corey. That's great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do I, any additional questions? Do I hear a motion to accept the audit?
I move that we accept the audit.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys. That was a great-
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Okay. Now on to the mayor selection. I know you've all been waiting for this. As most of you know, there was only one candidate that submitted for the position of mayor, and that was Catherine Stock. Her information and response to initial questions is in the packet. Before, before we were aware of any responses, and in an effort to have better information, we had decided to send out the questions one day ahead of time. That would give the applicants a chance to think about their answers, and Catherine received the questions on January 2nd. The questions are combined effort of city council minus Catherine. And Catherine, will you please go to your interview seat?
So I'm wondering, would it be, oh, I'm just thinking about who I can see and who can see me. Would anybody have any objection to me being seated here?
Actually, that's a good idea.
Have any thumbs down from our electronically involved citizens? Okay, and then Josh, I have one favor to ask. Asking for a lot. Could we move that podium so I can see everybody?
Great.
That'd be great. Debbie Moberly strategically hit behind there. Thank you. Like, I didn't know if that was a technical thing or just a move thing, so.
Oh, that's great.
Thanks. And I will sit here then. Thank you. And I hope everybody can hear me. My, my mother's voice is now present in me, which has this rasp that I'm growing into, so.
I think we're getting an additional microphone.
There we go.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Great.
I don't know if that's working out on that side.
Right. Can everybody hear me all right back there? Okay.
Well done. Not surprised. All right. Maybe that'll work, maybe it won't.
It's okay.
There we go.
Not quite. Not almost there.
Spaghetti mess back here. All right. That should do it. Yeah, well, it's somewhere. All right.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. Are you ready?
I'm as ready as I'm going to be.
Okay. What specific experience or background has prepared you to be mayor?
So you have to start traditionally with your work background. I'm going to take it a little further back, and I promise this won't end up being one of those family stories that lasts for about 30 minutes. But I honestly think the background that might have prepared me best was my family, growing up. I learned a lot from my family, and they've always provided a tremendous amount of support. And they let me try things. And my parents indeed pushed me to do things that I was nervous about or afraid to do. If you know me at all, you know I'm mostly an introvert, although when I'm speaking in a better voice, if you only knew me that way, you wouldn't necessarily know that about me. But I am. And so from an early time, I was really given support and nudges to, to try things. As I went on from school to work, I was lucky enough to start a job with Nike in Memphis, Tennessee in 1985. So you can tell from that date, I'm not going to give my whole work story. We'd be here all night. But I learned a lot working for that company. They were small-ish when I started. My dad wasn't sure they'd really be a great place to go to work, because they were still a little iffy compared to major employers at the time. But I did. And then I, in my career, I worked primarily in supply chain operations, and I loved it. It was complicated. It was involve people and facilities and technology all over the world, and it was a constant learning experience. And that's what I loved about it the most, was the learning. And as I moved on and up, I had a lot of people helping me along the way. And I was fortunate to have a couple of really key mentors for me, who again nudged me and taught me a lot. So I've had a lot of experience managing people from like my late twenties on. I've, I became a manager at that point, and I pretty much stayed one through most of my career. I had larger and larger groups and more complicated things as time went by. I also had the chance to work in Europe for four years for Nike at their European headquarters. And I had a tremendously powerful set of lessons in cross-cultural communication, understanding different work norms, different cultures, how people think. I firmly understood then that that rule we usually try to apply, which is treat others the way you'd like to be treated, actually does not work a lot of the time, because they are actually looking for something else. So I had a reputation as a good listener then. I hope I still have that, and I hope to maintain it. But I, I really had to double down on that when I was working with so many people who came from backgrounds very different from my own. So that work experiences, family and work experience is very foundational. And then several years ago, I started to get interests, interested specifically in city government of Manzanita. It really ties back to what I said about my supply chain experience. I just, I really love learning. So right now, I was already thinking, well, I'm going to call Doug, because I definitely want to know more about the PUD and his time and how things work. So how things work, how people come together, the complexities of things, I find fascinating. I've never been deterred by it. So I started to work on learning the city. Guess I should look at you guys. I started to work on the city in the same way. So showing up, going to meetings, asking people questions, getting to know people, introducing myself. And that led to an appointment on the Budget Committee, which I did for several years. And I love that, too, and I learned a lot. And then from there, this last summer, when the, when the chair became open, I decided it was time to put my hat in the ring to apply. Yeah. And the other thing I would say that prepared me really, because I've been asked before, well, would you run? Would you think about it? Would you run for office? And I always said no, very firmly. But something shifted in me after COVID and kind of recovering from that and some family things. And I just felt like I was ready to do it. And so it was an internal shift. I know many of us are old enough to really know what that means. One week you feel one way, and then suddenly you change your mind. In my case, my gut changed first, and then my mind caught up with me later. So that's why I decided to apply for council, and that's why I decided to apply for this. And hopefully that'll be the longest answer.
Yeah. That was a good, that was a great, that was a great answer, Catherine. So are you saying then that you plan to run in November?
I'm saying that if I do well, and I'm useful and of service, and if other people see that and agree with that, and it's, and I'm good at it, yeah, I would.
Good. Excellent. Any other follow-up questions?
I'm up. Oh, I'm sorry. Follow up?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So Catherine, given that we have a, we mayor form of government in Manzanita, how will you work with the rest of the council to thoughtfully deliberate and reach decisions on issues before the council?
Well, it's an important distinction, I think, with the system that we have. So the way I look at it, the mayor is a vote. Every council member is a vote. We're five people up here, each of us responsible for making decisions. And those decisions get reflected in the agendas we set, the priorities we set, and then the votes that we make. So I, the mayor's position has got some additional responsibilities to go with it, but the core decision-making work is the same for all of us. So I would treat it and have treated it as a council member as simply being a part of a team of colleagues. I expect that we will treat each other with respect and agree out loud and disagree out loud and probe to understand each other's thinking. My personal bias, I guess, is to avoid debate. That's probably because I've never been a particularly good debater. So I don't have that style. I have a style of asking questions and listening, trying to see if there's a perspective that I missed. I think the challenging thing about council work and the mayor's position as well is we have a really limited period of time when we can do that, and it is in public. And now on top of being in public, not only are you in the minutes, but you're in a video archive somewhere that somebody can watch at will and go, go to minute 23.2 and see what she said then. So that's intimidating for a lot of people, but you just kind of have to say, well, you just have to get over it, because that's how things are now. So collegial conversation, which does not mean agreement all the time, and probing to understand different points of view, and doing that in the context that we have here.
Thank you.
Catherine, how do you see the division of responsibilities between the city council and the city manager and her staff?
Well, the city manager manages the city. We went through this with the council application, too. It's Leila's job to manage staff, assign duties to staff, evaluate staff, you know, growth and development of staff. All of that is her work to execute. She also serves as an expert advisor to us. It's her profession to understand the laws, the legislation, you know, what's the same and what's changed. It's her profession to understand the best way to brief council members and make sure that we are up to speed on what we need to know. And so I see her as, well, obviously, the, the distinction between leading staff versus what- And so I see her as, well, obviously the, the distinction between leading staff versus what we do, which is helping to set the strategic agenda based on what citizens of the, our many citizens, communities of our town want, and then turn that into action and making policy decisions and the other decisions that come for us, as, become before us as a body.
Thank you.
Any follow? You're doing well.
Okay, I wish my voice was better, but we'll just keep going.
Uh, given the critical nature of the public's understanding of the issues that the city faces and the importance that the public have the opportunity for input, what are some strategies you would use to make sure public outreach happened on a consistent, consistent basis?
Yeah, so this, this communication question is important, you know, and it's not simple. If it was simple to do, we'd have been, we'd have done it, and everybody would be satisfied. But as far as I can tell, there aren't that many people who are satisfied about communication. Um, even good friends will come up to me and say, why didn't I know about, you know? And I'm like, well, okay, so we've got a lot of ways that we're trying to do that now, and some of them are effective. We certainly have got more ways to communicate than we did even a couple of years ago with the, with the work that's happened with the website, um, with the way that documents and all kinds of information can be shared now that didn't used to be so easy to do, right? So that's there, and we need to continue that and keep looking for ways to make that better. I think the meetings, um, that were set up last year, the council, what did you call it?
Conversation.
Conversations with counselor. To me, that was, to me, that was one of the most effective things I have seen in terms of allowing people to come in in small groups to a comfortable setting in the library. Um, people knew there were gonna be at least two counselors there, so you have a better chance of, between the two of you, having all the information that you need. It was more conversational, people who don't like and would never get up to a podium and say something at a public meeting, they were comfortable or got comfortable once they were there and were able to speak. And you could have genuine back and forth and real learning, which I found to be a really good method. So I would say that we need to continue that in the new year and see if we can amp that up and make those sessions as effective as possible for people. It doesn't answer everything, but, um, it's a start. And, and I think suggestions on this are more than welcome, um, from anybody here or anybody listening, because I think we can still use some help to make that better.
Okay. Do you, do you foresee using social media or any other way to reach out to the community?
Uh, do you mean myself personally?
No, for the city. Or not for you, no.
Some people do, it's, you know, it's a thing. Um, not for me, though. Uh, I don't know. Uh, it's, it's tricky. Like, I, I'm not a big, I'm not a big social media person myself, but I can see the way questions come up, and people want a quick answer, and somebody gives them a quick answer, but it's not actually the right answer, and then, you know, duh, 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 duh. So I'm not honestly sure how we'd handle that. So I don't, I'm not leaning that way, but I guess if somebody came and said, here's an effective way to do that, or here's a city we have near us who does that effectively, and we could learn from them, I'd be open to it.
Okay.
Yeah, good. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, um, I have a two-part question. What are your thoughts about some of the specific suggestions for revenue diversification? And, um, how concerned are you with the degree to which the city depends on short-term revenue, uh, short-term rental revenue?
So I'll be, I'll be brief about the revenue diversification. I think, um, I think it's a very good idea that we're looking at this. And I remember the early meetings when it came up, and it got onto the agenda, and then, you know, we had a, a small committee set up to start to work on proposals for that. So we've got four proposals in hand at least, and, and some more as well. They're not, they're not, to me, they're not fleshed out enough yet to understand if they really will be applicable and policy changes or ways of living changes that people would necessarily support. We're not that far along the line yet, so I'd say I'm cautious about it. I'm gonna be candid, I'm not cautiously optimistic about it, I'm just, I'm cautious about it, because we've got to take a really close look at, um, all, all of those methods, particularly the four, which were the transportation utility fee, the prepared food and beverage tax, the general obligation bonds, and paid parking. So on the one hand, everybody can say, oh, oh, sounds like a great idea, and we can get money in, but nobody at this point really knows what that means for them. Until we have that conversation, we don't know. And, um, we've got numbers to vet as well, in terms of what they actually would mean, like real, a closer number to what the real revenue would be, so we understand what the trade-off is between the, whatever that revenue source is and whatever changes that we would have to make, citizens would make, or businesses would have to make to adjust to it.
So would you say that, um, the burden right now is on us to do more sort of deep diving into the policy analysis? Or is it time to start talking more with the community about?
Well, I think both. I mean, simultaneously, yes. Because I think, um, I think it'd be a great time now to start to get feedback from people and present things, so people understand clearly what it, what it means. What does a transportation utility fee look like, and what would it mean to me? What would it mean for the community if we could get that as a, a resource? So, yeah, and then diving, diving down, drilling down into the numbers now, um, would be a logical next step.
Okay. How about that second part? The, uh, the degree to which, if at all, you're concerned about the city's dependence on S T R revenue?
Yeah, you know, if we lived in a world, and if Oregon was a state where, um, our property taxes were enough to cover us, and were enough to cover growth, were enough to cover investment, then I would say, you know, I'd be much more comfortable with that. That's like the, the steadiest base you can have, but Oregon's not set up that way. And, um, most small communities, many communities are now, you know, really working hard to figure out how they're gonna finance things. So it took me a while, it took me a while to understand better the, um, the short-term rental business, the atmosphere, what it actually means here, and to understand the money that comes in from it. And I think, well, I'm not, well, it's, it's not an ideal source, it's still a really good source, and it's a, it's been a steady source for us, and I think a fairly predictable source as well, although you can have debates about that, forecasting on anything is interesting, and we could probably have a spirited debate about that right here, but we won't. So I'm not, I'm not super uncomfortable about it. I'd like to see diversification. I think diversification always is a healthy thing. And so if we can find a blend of our current base that we have, you know, the basis that we have for, um, revenue, and find some additional revenue streams, that's what would be ideal. Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Catherine, the council deals with many, many controversial issues. Please give us a detailed example from work or volunteer experience when you played a lead role in resolving a controversial matter. And the second part of that would be, please be specific about your role and what was the ultimate outcome.
Okay, so I'll give a brief example. It's from, um, work-life. Just after the turn of the century. How about that? Around two thousand, uh, I, I played a role in a, a very big, uh, change that Nike went through, and it was an infrastructure change. They took, uh, for the, and this is just the US business I'm talking about now. Um, they made the, the company made the decision, um, to completely, completely replace all of the systems infrastructure for the company. It ended up being about a ten-year project, uh, for the time it started to be visualized to when everything actually was implemented. So during that ten-year project for the company, there was a two-to-three-year period where I, um, had a job that was one of those jobs that my parents never really understood. It was transition management, and I was like, I really don't get what you do, Catherine. But the job was called transition management. I reported to the, um, head of the US business, the president of the US business, and my job was to work with every, it sounds kinda crazy, but every single employee basically in the US and their management teams to make sure that everybody had input into what the new systems were going to be, how they would work, um, what changes needed to be made with staffing. In some cases, it meant jobs changing, jobs added, jobs going away, skill sets that had to be, that were brand new, uh, changes in policies with our customers, with our vendors. It was a, it was just a massive thing. And, and in the way that Nike does things, there was no turning back. So there was one night where the CEO sat down with his management team, and we sat there with him, and we basically said, we think we can do it, we're ready to go. And then that night, every single system went down, the lights went out, and a nine-billion-dollar company was on the line, um, for what would happen when we turned the lights back on, so to speak. So my job in all of that was to work with every aspect of our business, um, from customer all the way back to factory, and take care of and solve any, any and every problem that came up. I never did that by myself. It wasn't my job to solve the problem. But my job was to get people together in a room, the right people in the right place, to make decisions, and then arbitrate when people couldn't. If I couldn't get two people or a group to agree, I had permission to make a recommendation or permission to make, uh, a decision. And it's different than kind of the controversial issue answer you might get in another setting. But what was controversial about it was just how, uh, how high everybody's emotions were, how tired everybody was, how much complex change was hitting people from all quarters. So it was a job that required a lot of, um, technical sympathy. I didn't know everything, but I had to be sympathetic and understand all the technical people, and I had to be very empathetic with all these people who are going through change. And some of us do well with that, and some of us don't always do so well with that. So that was more of like, rather than a situation, it was more of an ongoing job. Um, and it finally wound down in about two and a half years' worth of work. So the key to doing all that was, uh, visibility to people, um, as to what was going on, where we did have problems, constant updates to let people know when things would be fixed and what was necessary to do that. It involved having a process set up to escalate to senior management, potentially to the CEO if we had something really serious that needed his, his backing. Um, and a lot of time, I mean, a lot of time in rooms with people talking and listening to each other and trying to figure things out, so.
So that's where your voice turned.
That could be on hearing at that time, yeah.
So was there, was there a learning from that? I mean, uh, the one thing I picked up is communication is critical, and that's really an impressive example. But did you walk away saying, I really learned this?
I appreciated more than I ever had the, the complex nature of organizations and running them. And this can be true of small organizations as well as big ones. Um, I, I came away with an even greater appreciation for the contributions everybody makes, um, for the skill that you have to have in getting people to work together, to get those skills to come together, to get a good, to get a good result. Um, I learned a lot about when to cut things off, because we could have gone on for weeks on some things, and we just didn't have time. So, you know, we had to stop, we had to decide. So I think I came out of that with a better appreciation and a stronger ability to be decisive when it was needed.
Great. I think we need to hear it too.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a combination of things, you know, this patience thing, and part of the beauty of being in a, in a smaller town, in a smaller organization, whatever it is, is you can devote that time to a lot of people and listen to a lot of people. And it doesn't have to come in a business, but, you know, the level I was working, things were kind of funneling up all the time. So you talk to one person who was trying to represent a hundred people's feelings or thoughts, or fifty or a thousand. Here, y- you don't do that. It's, it's so, you know, organizationally, people would say it's flat. You know, we just, we can talk to people and individuals, and that's, you know, at my age now, that's much preferable. I would never, I would never go back and do, they wouldn't want me anyway to do that kinda job now, but I would, I'm not up for that kinda job now. I like, I like direct contact with people.
Great, great.
Just a statement and a little follow-up on that. Those, to me, are excellent skills, especially given some of the other questions that we asked about outreach and getting input. It sounds like you've had quite a bit of experience with that. One thing I experienced, uh, in my professional career is many times when there's new ideas or things that are put out applicable at work, it could also be applicable in our community, people tend to have a knee-jerk reaction to an idea, which in the corporate world always said, whatever's in your mind now, or you think's going to happen, or you're making assumptions about, it's not what the end result's gonna look like. How do you feel that, because I'm sure you went through that process at work, how do you feel that could apply to our community and how we could possibly mitigate some of that?
Not sure. I wanna make sure I get you. So are you asking about how to avoid kinda having a knee-jerk reaction and really stopping to listen, or?
Yeah, it's, it's that typical, when I would get, we have a new idea, we're doing a reorganization, and everybody just sort of scatters. Oh, my gosh, it's gonna happen.
Sometimes for a good reason.
Yeah, I'm gonna get fired, this is gonna happen, I'm not gonna be in my department anymore. But that upfront, when you get that reaction, my communication, my team was, this is an initial idea, this is something we're thinking about, doesn't mean it's gonna happen. And whatever that scatter reaction was, is gonna be a different reaction when we get to the point of implementing it.
Well, I think the knee-jerk reaction's always the interesting thing, because as a human, you just, we have them.
Right.
You know, you, you reached around and slapped, you know, the back of my head, I would have a knee-jerk reaction. So, um, that's a kind of a silly example, but the thing I learned over time, hopefully as I got older and maybe a little wiser, was you, you can, you can have that reaction yourself, you should expect that reaction on others, it's kind of a normal thing. But then you wait for what I just call the pause after that. So, and I, I, I work on this all the time for myself, because I'm not always the best new idea person. I'll be like, well, you know, what do you think about that, or I want some time to think about it. So you just have to, um, I think, create pauses and, and be prepared for people to have whatever reaction they're gonna have, because it's their reaction, it's not mine. And when I was younger, I, I could awfully get people to do something, you know, really, and then I kinda got older and realized that wasn't really ever gonna happen. People are gonna do what they're gonna do. So you have to listen, um, and pay attention, and you have to know how to, and just try to respond in the moment like a real person, and, and really, and really take into account what the person's trying to tell you when they're having the reaction to the idea, whatever it might be. I was this way on revenue diversification. I was like, I don't know, you know? But I was like, calm down, you gotta listen, and you gotta, you gotta consider. And other people are gonna come up with some good information, and you gotta consider it, and I will.
I'm glad.
Good answer.
Yeah, well.
Okay, any additional?
I have one question. I hope it's not gonna be a long one.
The question or the answer, Jerry?
Question will be fairly short. It's, it's not a specific follow-up to any particular question, but I think it's sort of a question that's hanging in the air. Now, we started the meeting tonight, uh, meeting Doug Alston, brand-new appointed, uh, commissioner. He'll be an appointed mayor at the city council with two other appointed people eventually. I've only lived in this town for seven years, and there have been six, uh, council resignations. That's a lot, and we need probably to fix the charter to make it easier for people to, um, either stay on the council or, or be succeeded by people both. But given that we're dealing with the hand we've been dealt with right now, uh, do you have any, uh, hesitations or, or, uh, concerns about serving as an appointed mayor with appointed colleagues?
No, I don't. Um, life happens, um, and people's plans change. And we can speculate about those changes when we know or don't know the person, or we may just, we may have, have any idea why somebody stepped away from a position that they were elected to. So the charter provides for this. Um, it's one of those cases where you look at the charter, and, you know, if you hadn't been in this situation, you think, wow, they really put some thought into like what would happen. It's, it's not that it wasn't considered, it was. And so we've got a charter that has, has and is supporting us through some unexpected and unplanned vacancies, and that's what the charter's supposed to do, is gonna be some bedrock for how you behave when people's plans change or things change. So, no, I don't, I personally don't have a hesitancy about that. Um, I realize that's gonna raise and, um, will raise questions. will raise questions in people's minds. But, I mean, that's, we're doing what we're supposed to do. This is how it's, how it's laid out. And all I can do is the best that I can do in a relatively short period of time, um, in a situation, in a position I didn't at all expect to do. So.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional questions? All right. Um, so there is a ballot. General, please.
unanimous Catherine.
That was odd, but we did it.
We did it.
Yep.
So can we swear?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
I already switched the gavel over to her side table.
Okay.
Um, you know the drill.
Short phrases, please.
It taught me how to do this right. Uh, I, Catherine Stock, do solemnly swear.
I, Catherine Stock, do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state, state of the great state of Oregon.
Bravo. The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Manzanita.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Manzanita.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties of mayor.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as mayor.
Of the City of Manzanita.
Of the City of Manzanita.
In the County of Tillamook.
In the county of, in the great county of Tillamook.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we had this shifted over here. Okay, we won't need to use that too much, I think. Okay, so, um. I didn't think I'd be nervous, but I actually am a little nervous now, so bear with me for the rest of the meeting as we, uh, go through. We okay there? I saw a meeting alert. Okay, great. Okay, so, uh, thank you. So next up, we've got the Short-Term Rental Committee. We've got a good neighbor and window film. Joe Newhouse is gonna take us through this. It's an informational update from Joe, correct?
I actually am gonna start out, if that's okay.
Please do.
Okay, so I wanted, one of the things that I think is important regarding communication is to understand how we got where we are currently. I think that's really important. And, um, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the, the reason that we started the short-term committee, short-term rental committee, and how we got there. So this last past year, this past five years, the city councilors worked pretty diligently on short-term rentals. I mean, it's a major income source for us, and it's really important. And it also affects the livability of the community. So as we all know, the transit lodging tax generated by short-term rentals and hotels is critical to the funding of the city and goes directly to the general fund. Because of the foresight of previous councilors, uh, 7% goes directly into the general fund, which is most of our administrative costs. 2% is split 70/30. 30% goes to the city, and 1% goes to the county. In 2020, at the council's request, the committee was formed specifically to review ordinance 10-3. Now, 10-3 is the ordinance that kind of is oversight of the short-term rentals. The committee was led initially by Steve Nudel, who was a counselor at that point, and later by Joe Newhouse. The committee was actually one of the best committees I've ever seen. They were, they were very productive and very, um, uh, active in reaching out to the community and really accepting and getting input. Uh, in less than a year, they came back with suggested revisions to, uh, ordinance 10-3. And after much discussion, those were passed in September 2021. The revised version resides on the website under short-term rentals, if you'd like to review it. Uh, one of the committee's recommendations was to form a short-term rental committee, a standing committee. That committee was created in the fall of 2022, and it included Joe Newhouse as president, Carol Kennedy as vice president, Michael Duncan, Cheryl Ogborne, Jill Petty, Anna Pong Nurean, uh, and Patrick Johnson. The committee's purpose was to recommend amendments to the ordinance 10-3 in order to enhance livability, to examine and weigh options for future short-term rentals, and to assist in crafting informational, uh, packets that could be distributed to the public so that there'd be a clear understanding of what the rules and regulations were. In addition, council froze the numerical cap at 230 short-term rentals in April 2022 through April 2025. This does not include the commercial zone or the bu, the commercial buffer zone, C1 or R2. Previously, it had been at 17.5%. The short-term rental committee was tasked with coming back to council with well-researched recommendations for balancing the needs of short-term rental and the community livability. An initial survey was done in 2021, and a second survey completed in 2023. Both are on the website. These surveys have guided many of the deliberations uh, of the short-term rental, uh, committee, and also in partnership with Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. So tonight, uh, thanks to Joe Newhouse, we're, we have a completed crafted information packet that Joe will share with us tonight. And that is being produced and hopefully mailed by Tillamook Coast Visitors Association, which is a great partnership. Secondly, because we need to make a decision, hopefully before April 2025, on the current numerical freeze, I would like to have council provide input regarding expectations or requests for the short-term rental committee on the, on their options. I would also hope to get some idea of when the update to council, uh, will be expected. So Joe, would you please come up and give your presentation?
I thought I saw you pointing. Do you want that mic?
Uh, well, yeah, probably.
Okay. No, I think we're fine. We're good.
Okay.
The whole top is actually the outgoing, and you have a good voice, so. I think we're.
Before I start, I just wanna congratulate Mayor Stock.
Yay.
Uh, and add that I've had the privilege of being in a couple of meetings that Catherine ran. And there is no one I have ever met that's better at listening, uh, probing, and getting consensus. So I'm really excited to see how everything plays out, but congratulations. Um, I want to start with a little preamble. The SDR committee, um, as, as Linda was saying, it's not a regulatory group. Um, we don't make final decisions on ordinances or on procedures. What we do is research. We do the deep dives into what other cities are doing, best practices, what, what's not, what's not going well for other cities. Um, we debate, we debate a lot. Any of you that have ever gone to the, uh, committee meetings. Um, we run our ideas through city staff, and then we propose policies to the city council um, so that you can consider our deliberations and then make governing decisions. Sometimes it seems like nothing's happening. So I want to start with a little bit of an, of an analogy. Um, I've bought a fixer-upper or two. I'm sure some of you have bought fixer-uppers. Um, when you buy one, it seems like there's a lot to do, and you never get anywhere. And then if you look back over the last couple of years of owning it, yeah, I repaired the roof, I replaced the carpet, I killed the termites, and I added dark sky lighting. I just had to put that in there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, it's the same for the SDR committee. Um, I know some people judge that we're moving too slowly. Um, then I think about all the changes that have been made and realize the problem is that we haven't done a good enough job in telling everybody what's been done. And that's the main reason for these two new documents. Um, we now have a citywide noise ordinance and a code enforcement officer. Um, the police department has made a new complaint form that all ordinances, issues that, and, and you can, you can get to that, um, complaint form on the city website. These are just some of the changes that had their origins in the SDR committee and then were enacted by council. Um, but who knew? So these documents covered some of those things and more. It was a joint effort of many people on the SDR committee, but especially Carol Kennedy and Cheryl Ogborne, who wrote the initial drafts of the brochure. I also want to thank Lori Dillon, who did the artwork. Um, it's very cute. And also Nan Devlin, um, on behalf of the Tillamook Coast Visitors Association, that, as Linda said, is, covered the cost of the final typesetting and the printing, and will cover the mailing costs.
Just great.
Yeah, that's a big deal, I think. Um, so the first thing that's gonna happen is, um, you, council have in front of them, um, the packet, and it's gonna be mailed out to all residents, part-time, full-time, once a year, in Manzanita, and also to all short-term rental homes. And it'll have this cover letter, um, that you see. Um, those of you who are on Zoom that maybe have a little tiny screen, I'm just gonna read it real quickly. Um, the Manzanita Short-Term Rental Committee, in collaboration with the Tillamook County Visitors Association, is sending you these two keep-at-home tools. During the committee's work, we realized we had a common community vision and commitment to our friendly, good neighbor atmosphere and culture of respect for the arts, for the nature that surrounds us, and for the diversity of individuals who visit or live here. In that spirit, we ask that everyone, full-time, part-time, and day visitors, keep this good neighbor brochure and essential resource list in your Manzanita home as handy reminders. The window film intended as a quick reference sheet for commonly-used community resources. And then we ask that they use a permanent marker and put their address at the bottom. There's a space on the bottom. Um, and the reason for this is not everybody making the phone call knows what the address of the house is. So if they can find it on here, it's gonna help the police department. Um, finally, we appreciate your continuing efforts to support our community. So the first thing I want to show you is the essential resource window film. Josh?
My bad.
Oh, sorry.
Screen, yeah.
Okay. So this is the window film. It's, um, and the reason it's called window film, I, for some reason, thought it would be transparent. It's not. But what it is, if you take the backing off, it's non-sticky, but it'll stick on a window. You can also, if you want, you can keep it in your cupboard. You can put it in a drawer. But having it out on the window just makes it noticeable so that during an emergency or when you need any of the numbers, it'll be easy to find. Um, the first number, by the way, is what Linda was talking about at the very beginning of the meeting. It's the police department non-emergency police number. So they can find it there. It's also all the medical things that we could cram in there and fit on. Um, for short-term rentals, it's the procedure you'd follow if you had a complaint about a short-term rental. Um, the, if you have an, uh, issue that needs immediate attention, there is a place on the website where you can find the phone number of the contact agent. There's also a sign on the door of, uh, uh, visible from the street on every short-term rental that has the contact person's name and phone number. Um, so it's just telling them where to get to it there. Um, if they have other concerns or problems, we put in the phone number for the code enforcement officer. Um, travel, we put in the O dot trip check. Uh, power, T-P-U-D. And then if you have problems with injured or dead animals on the beach or cougar sightings or whatever it is, the number to call there. And then finally, where the recycling center is located. And so we're hoping that this brochure, this, um, essential resources, by the way, was, um, done in the South County by the, uh, Visitors Association. And we just adapted it for our use. So we didn't, we put a lot of stuff in here, but we really just copied it from what had already been done. Um, questions about this before I go on to the next?
Joe, before the mail, animal given by the sea, there's a typo. It should be 368. Oh, no. Passing a wave. I don't know if that's gonna be a functional entity. It should be 503368. That is the number.
Right.
But I don't know if someone else has taken that over already.
I believe so, but I'm not sure either. But, yeah. Other comments, questions, anybody? Okay. So the next thing is the, by the way, um, there's a couple of copies of that kind of going around the room. The next thing is the good neighbor brochure. Uh, this is the front cover. The art again by Lori Dillon.
Really cute.
And then when you open it, you'll see the first page is a welcome to Manzanita. And it kind of repeats what it said in the, in the, um, cover letter. Um, but it adds that following these guidelines will help you and your neighbors to have a safe and comfortable experience, be it long or short. Um, when you then open it up, you'll see on the inside, uh, some of the things that we feel on the committee that's important to being a good neighbor. Uh, quiet time, what the hours are, parking. Um, off-street parking is required for all homes in Manzanita. Um, but we want to make sure that parked vehicles don't block driveways, uh, or emergency access, um, and to park responsibly. Pets, lease your pet, there is a lease law here. Um, and pick up after your pets. Um, I think sometimes that's what many of the SDR complaints are, is visitors not picking up after their pets.
It's not just visitors.
Um, recreational vehicles, not allowed to be occupied in the city of Manzanita. Um, traffic and speed limits, be alert, slow down. Um, garbage and litter. Um, again, we put it in the transfer station, um, and talked about the containers around town for litter. Um, we also noted that the dog waste stations are not for your garbage, uh, because I think visitors sometimes confuse that. Um, wildlife, we all know, we have it, it's here. Um, we shouldn't feed them. Um, fires, the number that you can, uh, on the, the website, you can just to find out what fire restrictions are. And then finally, um, a plug for the E-T-N-B and tsunami and earthquake preparedness. When you hold it back up again, on the back page. Laila, the back page. Ah, thank you.
There's a delay.
Yeah. Um, you've got information about short-term rentals. And again, um, if you, the contact information for the owner agent is posted and visible on the outside of the property or can be found on the city website. Um, and then the ordinance that an agent is required to make contact with the renters by phone or in person within 20 minutes of receiving any complaint. And if it's not resolved, the code enforcement officer or non-emergency police line, and then those numbers. So that's the brochure.
It's great. It's really nice. And I really like what Lori did on the front.
I do too. I, I like.
The manager does.
It's fun.
Yeah, it does. Any comments?
Um, excellent work. Very impressed with what you've done so far. One question, you said this is gonna be sent to all residents, uh, regardless of short-term, long-term, second home. Are you using tax records, property tax records to send that out? Because that's gonna be a lot more than the voter registration.
Correct. We're using a list that the city has supplied to the, uh, Visitors Coast, or the Tillamook Coast Visitors Association.
So it'll basically be sent to any house?
Well, that, that's a question actually, that, that we had for you, that, um, that Nan and I had for you. There are about 1,530. There are about 1,530 homes who get the, let's put it this way, they get the water bill at the Manzanita rate. There's another 380 homes in the UGB. So either we send out 1,530, or we send out 1,800. And that's kind of a, we could do either. The problem with sending it out to the UGB, which would include myself, is that some of this doesn't apply to them. Like the short-term rental ordinances do not apply to the UGB areas. That's county. Many of the other things do apply to them, like people are in town. And they're used, they're walking their dogs, and they're walking down the middle of the street, and, you know, so on and so forth. So that's kind of a question whether or not, as council, you think we should include the 1,800 or the 1,500, basically.
I think 1,800.
Terry?
Nan is paying the postage.
Yeah. Kind of a flexibility.
But you do make, you do make a good point. I mean, one of the, one of the things we, we struggle with up here is misinformation. So I just want to make sure that folks receiving this in the UGB don't think that the Manzanita ordinance supplies the UGB.
One way to do it, and I don't know how hard it is to pull those names out with your, the way you do the mailings, but we can have a different cover letter.
That's what I was thinking.
And if that's easy to do, and Nan and I have talked about this, we're willing to do the culling if that's what it takes.
That's fine.
That, we can do that. We can just have a different cover letter that says, in your case, do this.
I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
Okay.
Another question I had is, who signs the letter? Cover letter?
Layla?
Or Catherine. I think it should be.
Or the Short Term Rental Committee. It's, I mean, it's kind of a, personally, I would rather see it come from the city. But.
Well, why don't we, why don't we co-sign it between the committee and?
That'd be great.
That would be good. Yeah. That way, both are there.
Maybe we'll sign it.
Is there any precedent for this? No precedent. It's a prograin.
And then a small point is, it says, dear resident, and I don't think that's what it should say. So we just have to come up with a different word that we can.
You, you come up with that one?
Yes.
Not we, right?
Dear neighbor.
Dear neighbor. And the last one is, should we make it mandatory for all short-term rental homes? That the window film be posted and the brochure be, with the packet that's given to all short-term rental homes?
So there is precedent, and there is, there is required emergency information required in each of the short-term. So this would not be much of a deviation. This is just consistent, I think, with that, with that recognition of the emergency numbers.
Just to take one step back about who we address this to for consistency and marketing purposes, since we say good neighbors, I think we should say, dear good neighbors.
Okay. I'll pipe.
And question statement, it may be between council and you as well. And this is because of my newness to the council. Is it a correct assumption when we're looking at these types of ordinances or what you're working on in general, that any of these would apply to all households, not just short-term rentals?
I'm not sure.
As to me, if we put in a noise ordinance that says you're in a short-term rental, you have to be quiet between 10:00 and 7:00 a.m., but I'm a full-time resident next door, and that doesn't apply to me, so I can party all night long?
Actually, it does, because last year, the council made it a citywide ordinance.
That's, that's sort of my question is, that was just an example, maybe not a good one. But when these ordinances are passed, you're discussing them, is my assumption correct that you're really sort of deliberating as this specific to our short-term, or is it something like the noise ordinance that should apply to all of us?
I think, I mean, that's a whole bigger question about what the SDR committee does. And I think what the SDR committee does is, and what we did for 10-3 two years ago, is we said, here's something we'd like to see in the SDR committee, but we'd also like you to consider it citywide.
So that would be more than back to the council?
Yeah.
To decide, make that decision.
Right.
Thank you.
Did we get an answer on should it be mandatory for the?
Well, the short-term rental?
Short-term rentals?
My vote would be yes.
I would say yes. I mean, the quality of this alone, and just the safety factor of having that in a home is good. And I can't imagine any objection to having something like that. It's nicely done. It's part of however they package it for the people who are coming to use their, their place. So, yeah, it should be fine. I mean, do you see any concern with that, Joe?
Not at all.
Okay.
It's a positive information.
I don't, I think it's a fine idea, but it would require an ordinance change, wouldn't it?
You read my mind.
Well, the mandatory piece?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can certainly do that. It would be a small tweak, but we can't do it.
Right. That's, that may have something to do with the timing of mailing it out.
As well. Yeah, the timing is not, this is not something that has to be sent out next week. We'd like to send it out before the busiest season, rather than the busy season, but the busiest season.
So Layla, do you see an issue with that? No?
Just two readings. Just two readings.
Just two readings, okay. It should be pretty small.
And then we also have to make sure that it added to our inspection protocols, because that's the only way we can enforce it.
Right.
Through inspections. So, sure, it's doable, but it's just a thing to do.
Does this deviate from current ordinance of supplying emergency information?
I think it says tsunami.
It's a tsunami map.
Tsunami. Yeah. And I can't remember exactly, so.
It's not just everything we tell you to put in, you got to put in, so.
Yeah. Either small ordinance amendments do take effort, so be aware of that.
Anything else on the brochure? Linda, just to give you an update on what the SDR committee is doing now. What we're doing now is taking the, doing the deep dive research. Lately, we've been looking at some cities all up and down the coast and what their percentages are, whether they use a cap or percentage, and how many there are, and how many there are compared to number of people in town, just to get more data. Because I think the more data we have, the better we can be in giving you recommendations. We started with a proposal for both a cap and what that cap should be, and a percentage and what that percentage would be. We got, I will say, bogged down in the cap discussion. So we've kind of broken it out into smaller meeting groups. And we have a meeting before our, we always meet on the third Friday of the month at 10 o'clock, and on Zoom, for anybody that wants to attend. But before that meeting, we've got a couple little meetings scheduled with, to put together some drafts for a percentage recommendation and for a cap recommendation, and then the data to back it up. We're not going to finish that on this meeting in January. What we're going to do is look at what the small group has written as a, and look at it as a large group. And people will be able to add and subtract to that. We do a lot of discussion. And I, the reason that we do a lot of discussion, and I think this is the reason that some people feel we're not getting anywhere, is that my style is I want them to have, I want everybody to feel that they've had their say and they've had their input. We have the time to do the deep dive that you do not have time for. You've got so many other topics to discuss. We have one, it's short-term rentals. So we can kind of deep dive, we can look at it carefully, we can come to agreements. And then we present to you what our thought processes have been, and then you can make the decisions on how the city wants to go forward. And that's, that's kind of where we are now. On the side, we tend to do a lot of other little projects, like if you want to call the brochure a little project. That was something that was done at the same time as we were doing this. We're also looking at some density issues and how we can address some of those issues. And we're just kind of working through the process.
Well, does council have any input or thoughts about this? One, one of the issues, I'm glad you mentioned density, because one of the issues that was, you know, top on the list right after the Short Term Rental Committee was formed, was density. Can you talk a little bit about how that has shifted in terms of importance and maybe the first thing to do?
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that it shifted a little is that when we did the survey this summer, the second survey, we found that 80% of the people were either ambivalent or positive about having short-term rentals in their neighborhood. And interestingly, to all of us, the people who live along the beach where the density is higher, the percentage was higher than that of people who were either ambivalent or positive. So while everybody, I think it became kind of a, a trigger word. To some people, it is an issue, and I don't think there's any denying that. But to most people, it wasn't as big an issue as the trigger word led us to believe. And because we had the deadline of the freeze, we felt we should deal with that first. Because we felt that the biggest thing that we faced was that we made all these changes and nobody knows what they are, we should put out some educational materials. We wanted to focus on those things first. But eventually, yes, and, and as I said, there are some ideas floating out there that I think make good sense to start. And I don't think any of this is a, I used to be a HR director, and I had a vice president who came to me once, and he goes, "Once we stop, once we figure out this problem with Jimmy, we're not going to have any more HR problems." And I said, "You know, it doesn't work that way." And it's the same thing with the, the SDR. We can come up with solutions for this problem and that problem, and we can say, "Okay, good, we're done with those." And we're not. I think there will always be things that will come up, which is why it's a standing committee. And we'll work through those.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, the, the analysis that you're doing then, and the proposals or, you know, options you're going to lay out for council with a recommendation, to me, that seems top of mind and the first-order business for the committee. So I just ask that, as you're doing the work for that, let's make sure that we're clear about what requests you have of staff or and/or council in terms of background. So this, I mean, this clearly is, you can't have a conversation about cap, you can't have a conversation about percentages without having a conversation about the revenue stream for the city. So that seems like that would require some grounding on the committee. And if you don't have that kind of grounding, we need to make sure that you've got it. So I guess the, the question for you is, is that a relevant need? And if so, then we need to make sure we take care of that.
I think it is a really relevant need. And I think that having somebody, maybe from the Budget Committee or somebody, maybe Layla, but having somebody tell us, here's what we need, is so much more helpful than having someone from the SDR committee saying, here's what the city needs. Because that's not our job. That's, that's the budget and the city's job. And so, yes, having that information, I think, would be really valuable to them.
Okay, so could we ask, would it be appropriate then for Joe to follow up? And I think a Budget Committee member could be a fine representative of this. Layla, that could be you, but maybe your call on who that could be.
I actually really like Layla to be there. We talked a little bit about this.
Okay.
And maybe Chip could join Layla. I'm not sure. But definitely, I think it's important that Layla have that conversation.
That's great.
Okay.
I think I have sort of an understanding of the financial necessities that are required for us to operate this organization. And, you know, I'm always thinking towards the future. So can provide a good, solid grounding for the committee to understand interdependency between the minimum revenue that's required in order to maintain the current level of service, and then any estimated increases in level of service as we grow. Because we do have a pretty significant chunk of land in the UGB that is prime for development, and we have a new housing mandate from the state that we're going to have to deliver on, which is going to increase housing capacity in the city, which increases demand on to the city's services and needs. And I think that that is actually probably better delivered coming from me than probably a member of the Budget Committee, so.
So I have one question, too, along those lines.
You're asking that.
The, kind of the, the future, how far in the future should the Short Term Rental Committee be thinking? Is it a five to 10? Is it a 30-year? Is it?
Well, I mean, I think we should minimally be thinking always five years in the future. We're about to enter into a comp plan update that's going to be envisioning what the next 20 years looks like. I think it depends on the mechanism that you put in place. And so right now, the cap is fluid, and it moves with development, right? So the demands on our services and the things that we provide, which are substantially provided by the revenues generated by the Short Term Rental Committee. So I would just say, by and large, any reduction in existing level, you need to tell me now who I'm starting to cut, right? Because that's like the basic thing there. So as commercial and housing development increase, that increases demand on our services. As new services that we provide, code enforcement being one of them, we have to be able to sustain those services. So that's, that's separate from increase in housing and growth effectively. So I think we can't be thinking short-term. To me, short-term is five years. Okay. So I think we need to be thinking, the perspective needs to be wide enough that you're thinking five to 10 years. And if there is a hard cap, which they're currently, it's frozen, so it'll melt. But if there's a hard cap, then that needs to have some sort of mechanism in which it's reevaluated over time. And it needs to be efficient and effective and tied into some factual basis. But I think really, we should be thinking five to 10 years in the future as you come up with these strategies. And then we should always be thinking about where we're going to be in 20 years, because the things that we do today will set the stage for where we are. So if we think about where we are today, that was set in motion 20 to 30 years ago. And so that's just, it's a long-range planner's way of thinking, but I think it's the right way to think about it.
Okay, good.
And just a few comments about some of the data you're looking at as far as revenues. And I think this will include the committee as well as staff. If there's any potential way to come up with some number statistics for the council to look at that even, and I know, again, easier said than done, she's going to throw something at me. But is there any way to actually look at, like, we froze this in 2022? Can we look at how many residents were added, or housing was added? And if we had left it at the 17.5%, what the actual looks like if the cap hadn't been put in place? I think that would give us a better vision of what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Long-term, sort of thing. So any, any of those types of comparisons that you can actually project actual versus proposed?
Isn't that number 1,530 times 17.5%?
It is. So we would have capacity for, so I can, I can pull that together fairly easily. But what I can tell you is that we put the cap in place in 2022 April. Capted at 230?
230.
Yeah. In the, in the residential districts. We have not had a waitlist. So that number could have increased, the amount of permits could have increased. I don't think it would be significant, it would be a handful. But in that timeframe, we have stayed within what was frozen. So.
Does that include the commercial?
That's right.
You'd have to.
And I can't, I won't speak to it. I think we may have issued one permit in this, yeah. I'm just going to.
Historically, over the last 10 years, we've added about 2.4 short-term rentals per year. This last year, as Leila said, it's actually, the number has dropped. So it would probably be a minus. And there have been other years that have been minuses and others. But over the last 10 years, it's been about 2.5 a year.
We had eight open permits recently.
Yeah.
Once we did the new renewals. And then those are now, there's current applications in place to replace those permits. So I guess the point is, even if the amount of permits that were allowed based on what we've seen since the freeze, it's.
Kind of a moot point because nobody's used them. Got it?
Yeah. And that should tell us something too about, is this like, are we just getting inundated with requests? The answer's no, and the data shows that. So I think that it's just something for us as a community to think about. But we've grown in that last couple of years, but.
Well, there was a big surge during COVID, and I think that just.
Well, the number didn't change, right? So there was some development.
There was a surge.
Some development growth happened. And I don't have the numbers before me, and I'm not going to say anything without having them in front of me. The utilization of the existing permits increased.
Okay.
Right? So our revenue was pretty steady, and then it just shot right up. And it stayed fairly close to that. So people were just using the STRs more.
And I think that's some of the data that we need to better understand. We need to know, you know, when you have a tax rate, if the STR owner is charging more in July than in March, we get more money in July than we get in March. We don't really know. I don't know enough about utilization rates, occupancy rates, how the prices fluctuate, how that drives revenue, how any of that has changed since the freeze, how any of that has changed since we came out of COVID. And I think you guys have been doing a lot of number crunching. And it would be good, I think, at this point, as a check-in, along the lines of what Karat is saying, if we could, if we could just sort of lay out for you our data questions. You may already have the answers, or you may have already been thinking about them, or you may, it's going to be really hard to get that. So I would like to kind of feed those questions to you now, not tonight, but through Linda, I guess, as layers onto your committee. You know, I know from talking to Patrick, for example, that he's got all kinds of numbers in his head. It's really hard for us to sit here and make policy judgments without understanding the underlying data. So I would hope that a lot of that work has already been done, a lot of that thinking has been done, and you can sort of flesh that out for us when you come in with recommendations.
I would hope so too. But again, I would say that I would rather have the data come from Leila.
Well, I think the primary source of data will be the city.
Yes, I'm sorry to put that. But I think you're right. We, if we're going to make decisions, and I'm not sure we are, we being you and us, I'm not sure that we're going to make decisions on what the cap should be and what, or what the percentage should be based on how many days a house is rented compared to what it used to be. I mean, I'm not sure that's how pertinent it is, but it's always, again, it's good to have data, so.
Let me do a time check here. I'm going to do a little process check. So we've got Powell set up, so we'll have you and Leila touch base. Seems like there's two, these two streams of work going on there. One is the informing that the, in briefing, that the short-term rental committee needs around all of the variables at play. We've talked about some of them. So Leila will work with you to have that briefing. And so people can have a better lay of the land financially of what's going on and also what may be coming up with some of the changes with housing and a few other things she mentioned. So that's one thing. Second thing is this, you know, the data question. And this is where we just, I would ask you to ride herd on that. You've got a lot of really bright people. There are a lot of, there's a lot of data out there and a lot of data that can be gotten. And you've got the talent on that team to get it. I would ask that you keep the group very focused on what is useful and pertinent for the decision we have to make and make sure it stays there. Because we all know how that can go. And it's fun, and people, you've got some data-driven people, and that's a lovely thing. So let's just make sure that stays focused with the question at hand.
And then the ordinance change.
Yes. And then another thing, I think, to, we're learning from this, I think, the standing committee because you're a committee and then there's staff to do work. You aren't set up, nor are you allowed to create work for staff directly. That has to be a permission basis, right? And that can be a thing, it gets a little wobbly sometimes too. So I just ask that you watch that carefully. We've got staff doing a lot of things. And anytime time is needed to be spent on this, although it's important, it's got to be weighed against other things that are important as well. So Leila will be the person who's going to help you manage that. And I think it's good. And I think we're going to learn some, I think we're going to learn a lot from the ability of your folks to really spend the time and really care about it the way that they do. So we just manage it well so we can have a really good, kind of robust discussion about what you've learned and what you can share with us in a way that helps us make policy decisions, if need be.
The last thing is, at some point, we need to come to you. And I think, now we've talked about, if we have a deadline, I think that will help us do that.
Okay, what seems reasonable?
So we're looking at maybe April or May? What do you, what would be, what do you think would work?
I think to say we will have a presentation to you in May is a little bit more reasonable because we only meet once a month. I'm out of town March.
Why don't, let me suggest then, why don't we look at just say early summer? I think this is also contingent on how much work is needed for the briefing and if you need any other assistance, which then has to be weighed against other staff work.
I think we're getting pretty close.
I think we're getting, okay, Catherine, I think it's close enough to do that.
I like where Catherine's at.
Well, and we've already started talking about Leila being part of that. So a lot of what you're asking for is in process by now. The only thing that isn't, and I think would be really helpful, is a list of what you'd like to see.
I think maybe, if I may, that's all right. Maybe you can direct that to me.
Okay.
Because if you're asking for data, I might be able to help you sort through that. And we've actually had some conversations about data and what's available, what's not. And that's perfect, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, great.
So does June work as a deadline date? And then if you hit a wall of some kind and you need more time, you just?
Summer.
We should make, we should.
Early summer.
We should get through the budget process, I think, before. So June, July, I think is.
Okay.
And then that, you know, at that point, the clock is ticking on the final year of the freeze.
Right.
You've got to get going.
Yeah. So June workshop in June.
I would request that it be July.
Workshop. There's no, there's no sense in.
No, this is, this is great. But they need, I think it really is important to have a deadline, and that's a very reasonable time. The July workshop.
Yeah.
Okay.
And meanwhile, we'll work on some other little side things because that gives us time.
That'd be great. Thank you, Joe. That was excellent. Thank you.
Let's keep your team. Okay, next up, we've got Leila.
Yes, true.
Planning professional services contract.
We need to extend the time.
Dan, do we need to extend the time, or are we okay?
I think you're okay till nine technically.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Okay. Okay, thank you. So tonight, I'm asking, requesting your authority to allow me to direct appoint Walt Windolowski to perform certain tasks related to planning services. Walt actually was the city's planning consultant. He was one of two that applied for the position that's taken by 3J. But we've had some changing in staffing. And I do want to acknowledge Chris Byrd, who was formerly our planning and permit tech, has taken over all of the responsibility for the short-term rental program. And I do want to acknowledge and recognize Scott Gebhardt, who is the development services manager, also the city's building official, who really helped Chris take on that job and to create and develop more efficient processes for our short-term rental program. So Chris has actually been performing with Scott's support both positions. So he's doing, he's really been able to kind of create a more efficient job process for the STR program. And he's able to support Scott to a certain extent with the planning and building permit-related activities. So that's an extraordinary thing. And I really can't thank Scott enough for stepping up and in when this vacancy was created, right before we got our tax remittances from TLT that quarter. And it was our biggest quarter of the year, and it went off without a hitch. And so that's largely due to Scott, to Chris, and to Nina. And so I just want to acknowledge that. That being said, Scott and I have had a couple heart-to-heart about this. We actually posted the permit and planning and permit tech position. And ultimately, they can do it. They can do the majority of the work. But there are times when the workload gets a bit heavy. And heavy, I should say, the workload's heavy as it is already, but it gets to a point where I think it's untenable. And untenable to me is when my staff isn't sleeping and they're working way more than they should be. So what I'm asking for is, and we approached our planning consultant, who, when we brought them on, had an expectation of a certain amount of work and agreed to be able to meet that. The things that we would need this additional support for are what we believe that Walt Windolowski can provide. And so we worked with our existing consultant, and I put it in the packet and consulted with the city attorney about this process. And it's a direct appointment process to see if we could bring Walt in as a release valve for staff when things just get a little bit too heavy. So we all know building and planning is pretty cyclical, and it goes up and down. And sometimes it's crazy, and sometimes it's really low. So I made the call to postpone, at least currently indefinitely, if this contract's approved, the replacement of that FTE, the full-time equivalent in the planning and building department, and provide this additional contract support. That actually saves the city quite a lot of money, frankly, in the end. And we want to just kind of see how it goes. And so what we're asking for today is to approve a contract with Walt. The procurement process we're using allows us to direct appoint him up to a certain dollar amount, which in this case is $100,000. We're not going to spend that this year. But it's like all the other procurements we've done, there's certain thresholds we have to meet.
It's five years too, right?
And we're proposing a five-year contract. And then we can renew that if we haven't hit that mark, or we can come back and renew a new contract. So I just wanted to give that perspective and understanding of what it is we're trying to do and that ultimately it will, I believe, save the city money. And it will provide my staff with the necessary support they need to do their heavy workloads well, but not be supremely overwhelmed. Walt's familiar with all of our code in a way that is very beneficial to the city. He'll just be able to hit the ground running with us. And so my request tonight is to ask you to delegate authority to me to execute a contract with Walt in the amount stated for the term that I described. I'm happy to answer any questions.
We talked about this was going to be less expense than FTE because of the current workload. But let's say in three years, we determine we're using Walt more or at a bigger expense than we would if we hired someone. Do we have the option with the contract within three years to say, "Okay, we've decided to hire somebody, we're not going to use you anymore"?
Yeah, that's right, yes. And I appreciate you bringing that up too. So you'll hear me as we go through the budget process, say, "I would reserve the right to maintain this FTE, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to..." My proposal for this year's budget will likely not include resources to support that. If we find that in a year or two that we do need that position, then we will work it back into the budget through that process. I will also note that for any reason, our current consultant not be able to form the services anymore, and I'm not expecting that. We would need to go back out and do another intermediate solicitation. We could use this contract as a bridge until we get there, but we would need to go out and do a new solicitation. But yeah, so I'm not going to release the FTE, I just don't plan to fund it this year.
You have questions?
I have two questions. One, why did we have to do Walt through 3J as opposed?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm sorry if it's confusing, so or not. We're doing a separate contract completely with Walt.
All right.
Legal just advised me to get a release letter from 3J.
Okay.
Sort of clearly identifying the tasks that he would be performing. So sorry for any.
No, that's okay. My other question was, just to remind us, do you need our authorization? Or are you asking it as a courtesy, or?
So that'll be a discussion for another time in terms of financial policies. But I tend to think anything above $10,000, I, as I do come to city council for those approvals.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like your approval.
Okay.
Any other conversation, discussion? Okay, so I'd like to request a motion then to delegate authority to the city manager to execute a contract with Walt Windolowski in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for a period of five years with the option to renew for planning services.
I second. I.
You want to first it first?
I want to first it. I'll first it.
Okay, thank you. Second, second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. There you go, Leila.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Fourth of July parade liaison. We are actually going to move this agenda item to next month. We'll be back. The Fourth of July will come again, and it will be on the Fourth of July. For those who always want to ask that question, it will be on the Fourth of July. I think we'll keep that tradition. The next item we've got is a significant one for us as a city. And I know we've got at least a few people here who've been very patiently and kindly waiting for a little over two hours now for this conversation. So thank you, lower to Haylam Community Trust, as well as other folks who are here for this. This is to talk about a change that some may be aware of, but some may not, about the city's liability as it relates to trails. So are you going to take this one and lead us through?
I'll kick it off. Thank you, yeah. So some of you may know, I'm going to actually have Dan Whitehall, our public works director, go through what has occurred. So just, he'll talk about what recreational immunity is, the case law that recently passed, and the steps the city is taking to ensure that we have reduced our risk and exposure to potential lawsuits as a result of this change. So Dan, I also just want to, I'm so proud of my staff, but Dan did an excellent job inventorying all of the city's assets and then met with, I think Margaret Ryan, and I don't know if she stuck it out this far, but maybe here as well, from County Insurance, who provides the city's insurance. And they went and did a ride-along and looked at all of the city's properties and evaluated them. And today, staff's going to go through kind of where we were, what happened, where we are now, and then provide our recommendations on what we need to do next. So I think with that, Dan, I'll hand the baton over to you.
Ah, thank you. Are you going to run the PowerPoint, or am I?
Oh, I don't know. I will do it so you can talk, but you got to give me a minute.
Actually, I have the ability to share my screen.
You do it.
No, no.
Hi, it's Margaret Ryan from CIS. I'm just going to jump in momentarily and say hello and say, "I can't start my video. It's blocking me from doing that." So somebody else has to, but I am available on video if you want me to be on video.
Okay, we're going to add you, Margaret.
Thank you.
So Leila, I think you're going to have to do the slideshow because it's saying I don't have permission.
Bill Tate's had to. Okay, you should be good to go.
Okay, there we go.
And thank you for joining us, Margaret. And thank you for joining us, Margaret.
You're most welcome.
downside to this thing is it puts it right in my toolbar. Alrighty, so I'm going to talk to everybody a little bit about recreational immunity and what has happened here lately in Oregon. Essentially recreational immunity set to us by OAS laws that provide a landowner is not liable for injury, death, property damage, anything when you're using the land for recreation. So this would be like parks, trails, a lot of open spaces is what it was for. What was a game changer was a court case that was held down in Newport, where Fields versus City of Newport. And what it was, was a person was using a trail, slipped and fell and said essentially they're using the trail not really for recreating. They were kind of fusing it for more of a pass-through type of thing. And so by just that concept, the recreational immunity role essentially got over, essentially overturned or not, it's no longer applicable. And so this is huge for Oregon because, let's face it, especially along the Oregon coast, we have lots of trails. In Manzanita, we have tons of them. So now we have a lot more liability that's been put on us. And so one of the reasons city county insurance services is also in here because they cover us for when these lawsuits come up and injuries can come up. So part of the, part of it though is being worked out and it's being worked out slowly because it is a short session. But it will take legislation to fix this, essentially this recreational immunity. Margaret was telling me just recently, there was another court case that kind of did a little bit of fill-in, but ultimately it has to be fixed legislatively. So what we are having to do in the meanwhile is, and this is something I learned, it's all new to me, discretionary immunity. So by discretionary immunity though, we have more on our plates as a city. So one of the things we had to do is create an asset inventory of all of our trails. And so this was a list that I had to generate. And on this list, I go through and I have to look at different categories of dangers and hazards on the trails, their conditions, are there stairs? And things like that. And then prioritize maintenance. So create work orders, create budget to say, hey boss, it's going to cost X amount of hours and X amount of money to fix this trail. And then of course, as it's been said, it's another thing added to our department as a thing to do. And Manzanita historically has not really done anything to our trails. Our trails have been essentially built, maintained by the general public. And so, so we do have that as part of our, our kind of immunity that we have. So this process is going to take a little bit. Margaret from CIS has helped me out a ton with this stuff. And you know, we've made some lists, we have some inspections we're doing. And so we also have to continue these inspections and reviews of the trail systems. She is generating a report that will be coming to the city. I believe in a couple of weeks, we'll have a full report from her on, on our walkthrough and CIS's kind of view on things. So these trails, as part of the inventory, I wanted to kind of point. So we have the southern, kind of I have the southern trail map here. And this essentially is all of our trail, our beach accesses and things like that, essentially start on Horizon Lane because Glen Esalen is outside our city limits and outside our urban growth boundary. But you can kind of see, these are all little tiny trails going through the city and out, out to the beach. We are only responsible though for the stuff that we manage. So in our case, a lot of the networks are, like a good example here is you see in red, that outside of the red line, you can kind of barely see, is the edge of property line. And then the trail starts where essentially the pavement ends. So that little section is all we're responsible for. Everything out over the dune, over the dune edge is the Oregon State Lands problem and pay or lack for that type of, that area. And most of our beach accesses are from Edmund South. All along County Road, sorry, all along Ocean Road there out along the beach, that's all county. None of those north of Lindo are ours. Another interesting point that we have is the Elk Meadows Park. And so when we walked through there, we, we, most of the trails are in okay shape. Before, there is one trail that has a raised wooden platform that's very slick. And then it leads to a set of stairs that are made of wood and that are also slick. And so we are going to have to do some mitigation on this. And part of that is we are probably going to have to do is close that trail section until we can get that mitigation and a plan put together and budgeting done. And that's one thing that we are going to try working with the Lower Nahalum Trusts because they manage that Meadows Park and they keep the paths with wood chips and stuff. And do a really great job and they've been an awesome partner. So we're hoping that we can get these, kind of these projects, you know, going. And especially with the coming budget year, getting able to, you know, budget and see what. So some other trails, because they're in very, very poor shape, we're also, we were looking at that would be closures. Beach Circle to Beach Street. So that one's just off the map here, it'll be on the next, the next one. Nutmeg, which is another, essentially it's weird. Pavement areas come to a stop and then you have kind of a natural area. People kind of walk through there. It's slick. There's not, not a lot of traction. And once again, even though it's a, a publicly made trail, not a city sanctioned trail, we still want to make sure, you know, we put signage up saying that it's closed essentially. And if people go around our signs, that's their responsibility. But we're doing our due diligence to say that it's, it's not favorable conditions to be walking. Hoiseke Avenue and Epo is another one. That's another trail that was put in by the public. They just started walking a trail and created a trail. So, but it is, it is one that we are going to have to sign and put a closure on. The other trails that we have, they were in fair condition, meaning that it's not going to take as much work to do and it'll take a little bit of, a little bit of funding to fix. But these, like the big lane to Oregon State Lands, so Pacific Street, the end of Pacific, for folks that have walked it, you walk out it and then at the very end of it, where we're almost to the part where it turns into state lands, it drops off suddenly into the creek area. So that's a spot where we have to look at a plan. Like an example would be putting a simple fence or barrier to keep people to walk along the trail. And not a, not a big lift, but still it's a little bit of financial. So until we can get to that, once again, these are things that we have to sign and say, it's closed. Ocean Avenue, North Avenue, these are all the same things. These are going to be because of like roots sticking up or slick stairs. So there's some mitigation work we have to do on each one of these. And then we had, we had some that have very small amount of work that has to be done. These are going to be essentially, a lot of it's going to be signage saying just being that it's uneven surfaces and things like that. Kind of marks out, there is like one, Horizon's a good example. Horizon has a, a pole that's just goes across the trail. It'll be a reporter for us to simply cut that out, open up the trail and put a sign up that says, once again, uneven terrain and give people warning of what kind of hazards there. So a majority though of our beach accesses though are open. They're open, they're clear. Some of them are a little bit narrow, but not bad. These, these areas really don't require us to do anything other than to post a sign that says pretty much some type of hazard as far as uneven ground and use it at your own risk. There are, there were no trails really that I had as far as listed that were perfect with nothing whatsoever. Every, every trail essentially will have to get some type of signage or some type of work. But we will, we'll essentially, we'll get there. Just kind of breaks a quick, quick down on it. This is, this essentially condition report was actually from CIS. We went through and we look at them and essentially it says, how bad is it? And once again, you see, most of them are, are good with no noted hazards, but they still require signage to help get us out of the liability issue. And then once they'll be signed and inspected, then majority of those will move into the, hey, we're in really good shape, number five, you know. It's the one and two area that is going to be the area of trouble. And so that's to be essentially seven trails within the city plus the eighth trail, which will be the Elk Meadows Trail. Any questions so far? All right. So from the staff side of it, we're not asking city council right now to, to do anything other than we wanted to make you aware of it, where it's what's going on with us. For us, as follow-up from staff, we're going to be continuing to work with CIS to complete the reports on the trails. Once those reports are done, I will pass them off to Leila and she will more than likely pass them off to you. So we are going to be, I'm going to be working with my staff with, and such to gather more information as far as what the repair work is going to cost and time taken. So we can put that into the report as well. Minor work orders. So these are things that are going to essentially be an hour or less to fix some of this stuff. We are going to go ahead and just get those worked out. And then we will be working on by end of, end of day tomorrow, getting closure signs up and closing the trails on the, on the list that's also in the report. Any, any questions on that? It's the end of the night.
Well, it seems, Dan, you've organized it in such a way, it seems pretty straightforward. And it does not seem like many commentary about our opinion about this or how we feel about it. It's not going to be useful because it has to get done. So would it be reasonable to assume that next month? Is it reasonable to assume next month would be a time to get a report out on if there's a budget gap that needs to be filled or any other thing you might need from us? Do you foresee that?
Yep. That was actually what my, my boss, Leila, wanted was essentially this to be the information. And then the following to be next month to say this is what it's really going to cost and what it's going to be. I would note that we are taking, from our approach, we're kind of really focusing on different areas. I have seen up and down the coast, other cities that have just put it out that they closed everything. Here, we are really trying to, to really mitigate having to do that. So Margaret, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Dan. Good evening, council, mayor, city staff. I'll be brief. I wanted to add one thing that Dan didn't, didn't explain so much about the immunity. Dan started working on this partially because CIS issued an article about the recreational immunity that was going to be lost. And one of the pieces of this is the immunity is, it stops tort liability right away. Whereas now it becomes, it's the intent of the user on the path. So you don't stop the case right away. This, the case has to be litigated. So it has to be, if there's so much cost involved in these cases to get to the point where you learn what the user's intent was. So it's actually quite a big liability exposure right now. So CIS issued an article describing this issue and what's going on with it. And one of the things that we suggested was an audit of your inventory. And this was to move into a kind of another position for discretionary immunity, another immunity that is offered to the government. And it requires decisions and documentation and these different steps to be in place. So we suggested this audit and following these steps to if you were to have a tort liability, if you had discretionary immunity, that might be a good secondary for you. I have seen no, I've seen a lot of trails and parks. I've been spending my days walking all over cities and counties, trails and parks. And I have not seen anyone that has done the level of work that Dan did on this. And so what he did was he really positioned you well for your discretionary immunity start filling in that gap. And if this, like you said, this is going to go over to the legislature. The legislature has all, has historically made corrections and helped out to keep recreation immunity available. So entities continue to want to share their resources. But discretionary immunity is kind of sitting there in the background. So now he's positioned you in a way to have that be there, even with the ups and downs of recreation immunity. So I just want to comment on how excellent he did, the work that he did. He not only positioned you well as far as making good choices to reduce exposures for recreation immunity, but he's also really short up your documentation to get your discretion, discretionary immunity in line. So that would also back you up. So kudos to Dan and his team for all the work that they've done.
I have a, just a general question. Are there any guidelines from either CIS or the state during this process of closing trails, making updates to further reduce potential liability? I think it was back at the beginning of COVID, one of the residents closed a trail that really wasn't a trail and someone decided to crawl over it.
Right.
And got hurt. I mean, I can just see some people, okay, it's closed. Well, I'm going to crawl over the fence and do it anyway. It's things like signage or saying, you're doing this at your own risk. You're breaking the law. There's fines if you go past this. You're trespassing. Just wondering if there's anything additionally that we might consider to, to further reduce that potential liability.
Dan, do you want me to take that or do you want to take it?
I can take a part of it and you can add to it. So we do have some signs, Brad, that we have that essentially, I'm not reinventing a wheel. I got from Duluth County, which I've sent over to Margaret. She's going to be reviewing them tomorrow. And CIS has their side of looking at it, plus they have a legal side of looking at it. So once we get those approved, there'll be a temporary, literally a temporary sign until we can get the metal ones put up. And so we will also be documenting, meaning we're putting a sign up, we're going to be taking photos of it to show it's there. We also, on part of the sign, it says for, it has a little note at the bottom for further information. We will be adding a section to our website that also explains why the trails are closed and how they're closed. So to help, kind of help that, that buffer of also protecting us.
That's great.
And I would just add that, that what you just asked for is what CIS issued in that article. So that's one of the reasons that that audit came out. The first step is evaluate what you have. Then look at that and say, are there some that are hazardous? We don't have the resources to either repair or maintain. Those might need to be closed. Then you can look at some and you can say they're great. We don't really see any exposures. And then there are going to be those ones in the middle that might just need a sign. So it's really going out and looking at what you have and then making the decisions accordingly. And then if you document that, then you bring in your discretionary immunity. You're building that, that case there. So yes, there is a direction. We have a great article I can send your way. It's got lots of signage information, ideas on, on what to do and how to do it. Because everybody's entity is kind of different with this.
And I guess longer term, what's Dan's team has done all this work to get rid of those risks and dangers, should we potentially look at putting signage anyway? We've made it as safe as possible, but you're still doing this at your own risk.
Yes, that's why in the permanent signs, and actually Margaret had a, a good point on when we were actually out looking was a lot of our beach accesses have random numbers, or not, they're not random numbers, but they have a numbering system to them. They're the green signs. I don't know if you ever noticed them. They'll have a number like a number six. Well, like even as the other hat, you know, I wear, the fire department, somebody says they're at access six, we most of the time don't have that information. So we actually, as part of our signs, our permanent signs, we will put on there, you know, this will be Chinook Beach Access. And then it will have the information about, once again, uneven surfaces, things like that. And that will be a permanent metal sign that will be attaching to like our, probably our doggy stations that are. that will be attaching to like are probably our doggy stations that are located at every, at every beach access. But those will be all permanent signs from here on out. And then we will also be inspecting our, our trails um, monthly. And it's a little bit of a load, but the nice part is, is that's going to be something that we have somebody that already goes out to the doggy stations and checks. So they'll be able to spot those hazards and be able to make that report back to us.
I would also add that that signage is such a service to the community for people to know that something is slippery or rough or unstable terrain is, it's a great, that's one of the issues in the Fields case that it, the person was walking on wet wood. And they said there was no warning signs. So the signage is going to continue to help you long after whatever happens.
Any questions then for Dan or Margaret? No, that's good. It's always a moment when you go, the wood is wet. So you kind of know that's slippery, right? But I know we have those moments all the time. So, okay. Thanks to Dan for sure for the work and Margaret for your guidance. And I'm assuming at some future point via Leila, if there's anything going on legislatively that we can be a part of or add our voice. I'm sure the League of Oregon Cities is working on this. I know the land trust organizations are, so you can give us a praise of what we might be able to do.
We will indeed.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much, Dan and Margaret.
Dan.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. So, uh, we're coming into the last, last session, last section of the meeting. Are there any reports from counselors? If they'd like to make or share, Jerry?
Yeah, just a quick note that on December the 13th, Linda and I met with, um, a group of about eight citizens, I think Leila joined us. Uh, that was a group we pulled together to help us, uh, begin to think about the conversations with counselors are going to be doing on revenue diversification. Uh, so that was sort of the beginning of that process. We're not going to try to do any conversations until we have a fifth counselor. But I hope and I think that, uh, shortly after we have a fifth counselor, we'll begin rolling out the conversations.
You some session with counselors possibly at the library happening around that?
I think that'd be nice.
Great, right. Thank you very much. Linda, anything else?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Brad, anything else?
Just another.
Okay. So looking ahead, which is always a nice thing to do. We've got a couple of things coming up that we know will be on the agenda that I'm going to ask Leila to catch me for what I, uh, miss. But at our, our next council meeting, we'll be reviewing the supplemental budget, which we knew we'd have to do this year as a result of the work on city hall. So Leila and team will bring that for review. Uh, we will have a counselor position open and possibly the most turned over seat we've ever had. But again, the charter provides for that and we're just going to keep moving along. So anyone, uh, online, and if you've made it through this meeting this long and are still engaged, you might consider yourself an interested citizen. So think about that. Uh, hopefully we've shown that it's not, it's not too tough a thing to do and it can be done, even if you may be a little bit nervous about it. So, uh, and any of us are open, I know to any conversation. If you or friends of yours are interested in applying, would like to know a little bit more about the work and what that is. So that'll be next month. I will probably be getting, uh, an update on dark sky work. We may have some follow-up as we just said on the trail closures. Uh, budget committee appointment. We'll be ready to do that. Okay. So is there anything else I've missed?
No, I think just with respect to the council appointment position, um, we will work to get that out tomorrow so that we can meet that 30 day deadline and have the interviews in February. So that's what we're going to endeavor to.
Okay. So I want to thank everybody, uh, to be here, for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Everyone who's online or looking at a recording later. Thank you very much for your participation involvement. Do we have numbers of people who are still on the line there?
Um, yes, uh, we had 29, uh, people on the web at the price number and 34 on Zoom.
Great. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. At, uh, eight 30, eight 40, I officially call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.